Good evening and welcome to the February 18th, 2019 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number two on tonight's agenda is public participation. Anyone that would like to speak under public participation, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you are a student, you just have to state your first name and your grade. So, public participation is open.
My name is Robert Bevel and I live at 12 Blair Road here in Merrimack. I speak in support of the petitioned warrant article addressing the ongoing zero-grade homework policy tonight. Current and former Merrimack State legislators, both Democrat and Republican, along with scores of parents and regular citizens, signed our petition to get the homework policy on the ballot. In all, we received more than triple the number of signatures necessary when we were notified that they had had enough to give us to qualify for ballot status. This homework protocol was enacted without a proper vote of this school board. It was enacted based on feelings, not facts, opinions, not on empirical data. It was originally enacted under the premise of attempting to level the playing field, when in fact it punishes our students, forcing them to compete at a disadvantage compared to all the other students across the state and nation, whose homework efforts are acknowledged and counted. Two years ago, this administration introduced the change in homework policy with its new protocol, which still requires students to complete an average of 60 to 180 minutes of homework per night, but without the teachers' ability to include grading of the homework as part of the final cumulative grade. The new controversial policy dramatically affected those students, both at the top of their class, as well as those struggling at the bottom. Merrimack honors students are no longer being judged on the same level as other high school students across the nation, as well within their own state. Merrimack students competing for scholarships and acceptance to a top-tier college, where grade point averages are usually the deciding factor, will automatically be starting at a lesser competitive advantage than other students. While at the other end of the spectrum, those students who are struggling to pass their classes and graduate on time are now being judged only by top quizzes and major test grades. The school board originally promised to continue the homework policy only if it was in the best interests of the students. However, our teachers, the ones who know our students best, rejected the homework policy three to one in two closed anonymous surveys. This board has continued to kick the can down the road on the zero-grade homework policy and ignored the complaints of its citizenry. This warrant article fixes that problem. Passing the article puts Merrimack High School seniors back in fair competition and returns them to a level playing field, with other students competing for college acceptance and merit-based scholarship opportunities. It also helps students at the lower end of the spectrum to pass classes and graduate with dignity and grace. The wording of this petitioned warrant article returns the autonomy of grading practices to the individual classroom teacher, who know our children best, and will restore our confidence in the grading system of the Merrimack School District. As long as homework is assigned, it should be graded and counted towards the student's final grade. If you as a body cannot endorse this warrant article, I ask that this board vote to make no recommendation at this time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Chason and I live at 19 Powers Circle. I am speaking tonight in reference to the turf field, again. I want this field, so I keep showing up. As you know, back in the fall, I witnessed kids, good kids, involved in a school sport that the school and the town couldn't or didn't fully support. Young kids that had to travel six miles away to practice time from coaches. Meanwhile, the school bell rings at 2:15, but the school either hasn't scheduled a bus or one isn't available. This continues for eight weeks for multiple teams. The more people I talked to, the more I realized this was a bigger problem. The good news is there's a solution. We've decided to start this effort for safety. My number-one goal was the safety of our kids. And all the other benefits that came behind this effort was building community, more opportunity for our kids, and a chance for Merrimack to be the one to take in income versus paying the competitor. I just need to say, I've been reminded in this process why I don't like being in the public eye. I give you guys a lot of credit, because the opposition is sometimes mean. So, I just wanted to say that, for the record, I'm not doing this for my quote "entitled" child. I am here and will continue to be here for all the children in Merrimack, and I will always stand for the safety. Please support this warrant for the turf field. It takes a village to raise children, and I'm calling on the village and I'm calling on you, the school board, to show support for this warrant. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public participation? Seeing none, we will close public participation. Item number three is our new agenda item, which is Legislative Update. If any state reps or state senators were in the audience, we would take a moment to let them provide testimony as to what is going on in Concord with education issues. Seeing none are in attendance this evening, we will close Legislative Update. And I will go on to item number four, which is a presentation about Rock the Street, a Wall Street opportunity provided by Fidelity Investments for Merrimack High School. I invite to the table Linda Mandra, and if you could please announce your guests.
My name is Linda Mandra. I'm a teacher at Merrimack High School. And with us tonight are Emily Hartman, Social Studies teacher; Melanie Headland, Social Studies teacher; Christina Cuzzi from Fidelity Investments; and we have two students with us, Cassie Child and Gabby Whitaker, who will also be speaking about the program this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to Emily to start us off, okay?
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Does that work? Okay, it's working. All right. Good evening, everybody. The opportunity to participate with our students in the Rock the Street/Wall Street opportunity was brought to our attention by Superintendent Chaffrey and our principal, Sharon Putney. Myself, Melanie, and Linda jumped at the opportunity to provide an additional learning opportunity for our young women. And Rock the Street has a short little introductory video that I think does the program justice here. And we'll give you an idea of the program as a whole, and then we'll open it up to let you hear from some of Merrimack's student participants. Taking a little breather. The program, while we're waiting on the video, the program is separated into three pieces. The first piece was classroom instruction, and our partnership with Fidelity Investments was crucial in making this happen. We had about, would you say, eight volunteers throughout the five weeks for classroom instruction. They met with the students from 2:30 to 3:30 for Tuesdays for five consecutive weeks. After that, we planned a field trip with Fidelity Investments to their Merrimack site, where students were able to tour some of the financial facilities, see trading floors, and really get to speak with some remarkable women who are pursuing careers in finance and in multiple avenues. And then the last piece of the program, which our students started a week ago Tuesday and are continuing on with currently, is they are paired up individually, which is remarkable. Each young lady has a personal mentor that comes to the high school. They're meeting with the young ladies during their lunch periods. They're talking about everything from creating their own working resumes for students to even creating their first professional resume. So certainly, something wonderful for them to have. They're also talking about career paths and future goals with them. One of the volunteers mentors actually said to me, "Wow, if I only had my shoulders, my head on my shoulders as good as some of these young ladies do already, what could I achieve?" So, such a compliment to our youth here at Merrimack as well. So, all right, so I think we're ready for the video? Awesome.
This program in Rock the Street/Wall Street has really changed my perspective on finance. Just being in Rock the Street/Wall Street kind of expanded my knowledge as far as business and financing, what it actually is. This experience was, it was amazing.
We have two missions, actually, at Rock the Street/Wall Street. The first is financial literacy. In addition to just budgeting, which is typically what most financial literacy programs handle, is budgeting and credit and things like that, we take a deeper dive into savings and investments. So, we want to get them to understand that they can understand equities, they can understand bonds, and that they need to have an active role in their own personal financial management.
Secondarily, what we want to focus on, too, is getting them motivated for their own careers and for their own education, especially around the area of women in finance, where we know there is less women in senior roles in investment or financial services firms. We definitely want to get them interested in thinking in that direction.
They need to know that they can be a CPA, they can be a Certified Financial Analyst, they can be an Investment Analyst, they can be a banker on Wall Street. The sky's the limit.
I think nowadays, a lot of what we have are just stereotypes. And when women, you know, especially all the girls that were in the class, when we just kind of got to see how much of an impact we will have and we could have, it's amazing. And I think that it's something that all girls should be able to realize, and that no girl should feel like they couldn't be able to accomplish anything.
It just builds them up to have the financial confidence that they might not have had otherwise.
Learning how to budget, save, and invest is a fundamental skill that every person, certainly every American, needs to have. And that's the point in your life where you really are making financial decisions. You're deciding where you're going to spend money, how you're going to spend money. And so, understanding the implications of each one of those decisions is critical, and it's a perfect time to learn, as you're making some of those initial decisions, even thinking about college.
I'm so lucky to be learning about it now, because so many young women and just youth in general don't get that opportunity. And so, it just made me more aware and like realize how much privilege I have to be able to get educated on these topics, and how I can use that to help educate others, too.
The program for me, as a teacher, is another way for me to open up doors for my students. They can hear from me and they understand my background, but to be exposed to dozens of women that are coming from diverse backgrounds, but all have ended up in the finance industry, then they can learn from those women as well. And they can glean the little pearls out of what they're learning, those pearls of wisdom, and then they can use those to help plan their own future.
This program actually changed my life, my whole life.
We had about 30 students during the initial classroom session for those five weeks with the representatives from Fidelity. We had about 30 students also attend the field trip to the Fidelity site in Merrimack. And about 15 have continued on to have those one-to-one partnerships with mentors from Fidelity throughout this spring semester. So, we have two of those students here, Gabby Whitaker and Cassie Child. They're both juniors at Merrimack High School.
Thank you so much for having us. I'm really excited to talk about the program. Me and Gabby both really enjoy the program and are excited to finish up the rest of the mentoring opportunities. I was going to start by talking about the classroom time that we had, and then Gabby would continue with the field trip and talking a little bit more about the mentoring that we've started. What was really surprising on the beginning of the program was all of the girls from our school that were actually deciding to participate in it. There was classmates of all different like grades and different social groups and all of that, and we had to move to like a bigger-sized classroom, because so many people decided to participate in it, which was really exciting. And as we like went through our classroom time and on Tuesdays, each time there would be a different group of volunteers, about like three or four women, and sometimes they would change, and we'd get to meet new women working at Fidelity. And it was an opportunity to hear different journeys and how they started working there and different career paths that they took. Another really interesting part of the classroom time was Rock the Street provided us all with different workbooks. And they included articles that went over information about women in finance and women in the stock markets, and some really interesting statistics about the low amount of women that are actually in the STEM field. And a lot of us didn't even realize that finance was part of the STEM field, which was kind of cool. And we also had an activity where we worked in groups to plan a budget for a woman about like in her twenties. And I think it was a yearly budget, and she had to save up for different things, like getting a house or saving up for vacation. And I found that really helpful, and I think a lot of my peers did, too, because it was really applicable to stuff that we would have to be deciding after we graduated from college or something like that. There's also something that we don't really get to go over in school a lot, unless you're taking a specific class about finance or budgeting. So, it was a great opportunity for anybody to get that information and learn and feel a little bit more secure about what we could be doing when we get older. And also, I'm someone who wasn't taking a lot of interest into business classes or the field of finance before I took this program. And most of my background knowledge came from my economics class, but the classroom and the field trip together brought a deeper understanding of what the stock market was and how the specific business worked, which is something I wouldn't have been able to get in just a regular classroom time. And it was also a great way for me to try out the career path of finance and also working with these women and getting to talk to so many and ask so many questions. I kind of got to explore more of the career of going into like a business degree or something like that, and not having to make that commitment of, "Oh, my gosh, I need to choose a major, and I need to make all these commitments right now." That's the other thing about Rock the Street. It was low cost for the students, and it was also generally low commitment, as the mentoring piece was optional for us. And so, it was another really good way, an opportunity, for me and my classmates to like enter into this field of business and kind of learn more about it, without having to join a more like time-commitment-based club with, that had like bigger costs and stuff like that. So, it was really awesome. And we thank the school board and Fidelity and Rock the Street and all of our awesome teacher volunteers and for putting in the time and effort to making this possible for us.
Hi, I'm Gabby Whitaker, and I'm a junior at Merrimack High School. Before I begin, I would like to thank Fidelity and Rock the Street for making this possible, as well as everyone welcoming me here tonight. I'd like to start by saying how impressed I am with my experience. As a member of many business clubs and classes at the high school, I was already entering this program with an understanding of business and finance. Combined with basic understanding of budgeting, retirement plans, and the stock market, I was exposed to learning about the role of women in finance and STEM. I was able to build upon my previous knowledge, as well as be surrounded by other like-minded girls interested in achieving their own financial goals. Another element of Rock the Street/Wall Street program was the field trip we all took. I found this experience to be incredibly valuable, because I was able to experience the atmosphere of an office, interact with employees, and listen to the words of many successful businesswomen. Especially with college decisions on the horizon, it is useful to hear how they reach success in their careers. In addition to the field trip, we were given the option of enrolling in their mentoring program hosted by Fidelity volunteers. Since we have just begun this portion, there isn't much I can comment on about it. However, I believe this program is beneficial for those students who may seek a role model outside of their home to assist in creating a bright future. My mentor was nothing but positive and helpful, and I'm looking forward to the coming weeks with her. Overall, I have come out of my experience at Rock the Street/Wall Street with nothing but more knowledge and guidance to assist me in my path to the future.
And now, we have one more person that we would love for you to hear her thoughts. And this is Christina Cuzzi. She is a manager of human relations?
Community.
Community, oh, human, community relations, yes, at Fidelity. And she's been a great collaborative partner with Merrimack High School in many ways, and I'll let her talk more about that.
Thank you so much. And I just want to start by saying, these girls are why we do what we do, just hearing them speak about the program. So, thank you. Thank you to the school board for having us. I'm going to just take a moment to talk a little bit about, not just Rock the Street, but the Merrimack School District partnership, which hasn't been going on that long, so it's pretty powerful to think about it. As you know, good corporate citizenship and building community engagement in our regions where we work and live has been a core value of Fidelity since the company was founded. Through our Employee-Volunteer Program, which I manage, called Fidelity Cares, our employees are lending their expertise, time, and often their hands to help make a difference in our community. As a result, we're making lives better, both for those employees, but also for those in the community. Just a little bit about Merrimack Fidelity, Fidelity New Hampshire. We have nearly 1,400 associates who have donated 6,000 volunteer hours over the last year or so. That's about 26% of our employee population in New Hampshire, which is great. We encourage our associates to put away their computers and go into the community, whether it's revitalizing schools, hosting financial education workshops, donating money, tutoring children, or advocating sustainability. Our associates are empowered to make a difference. The partnership with Merrimack School District has been nothing short of amazing. Last year, we kicked off this relationship with volunteers working alongside the New Hampshire Scholars/Students to build a garden and complete other landscaping projects. Merrimack High then welcomed us with open arms as we engaged Rock the Streets/Wall Street, which you heard is a program designed to spark the interest of high school girls into careers of finance, which is obviously very important to us. That's our future. Students had the opportunity to visit Fidelity last fall, learn from volunteers, and are now working one-on-one with our mentor volunteers. It doesn't end there with Merrimack. Our Emerging Leader Program is also bringing financial literacy curriculum to a group of students over the course of 12 weeks. Emerging leaders for us are new grads that are just entering the workforce at Fidelity, so they can really relate to the students, but they're high-potential employees, so hopefully they can bring some of these students into our workforce. I just want to thank these great teacher champions, Superintendent Chaffey, for advocating for our programs and teams in Merrimack, but also throughout the state. So, thank you. Lastly, the students make what we do fun. They really, they're the core of what we, why we do what we do. And I just want to say, you have a great team here in Merrimack. It makes work, my job, really easy. So, for all of this, we're really, really thankful. And lastly, just a sense of accomplishment and purpose our employees get from working with the students is really powerful, and I just want to stress that one more time. So, thank you to all of Merrimack, the school district, the school board, the students, the teachers, for what you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Christina. And based on this relationship and this program, I know that our local New Hampshire Scholars Group in our district recommended to the State of New Hampshire's Local Scholars Organization in Concord that you be recognized for this work, and you were, I believe, awarded an award for this collaboration. And we thank you so much for what you brought to us. I'm glad that the State of New Hampshire also recognizes what great value Fidelity brought to the table.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Are there any questions from the table on this program? I see Cindy.
Not so much a question, but a comment. I just want to thank everyone that was involved in putting this together, particularly, I mean, I think we've heard all about it, every, all the way around. And I think it's a true example of the power of community and the power of investing in our future leaders. And so, again, to all of you here tonight on this topic, thank you very much.
Naomi.
This is a question for the students. Thank you all for being here. What were the main reasons that you signed up to participate in this in the first place? What were the motivations that you had for it?
Okay, so, I am a part of many like business clubs and classes at Merrimack, so I take accounting, marketing. I'm in securities, insurance currently. And I am also the president of our DECA club at school, and I'm part of Academy of Finance and Finlet 300. So, it was something right up the alley of that, so I decided, why not have another experience and like more exposure? So...
For me, I wasn't really sure about what career path I wanted to take, kind of the opposite of Gabby, but it was a really great opportunity for me to kind of try out finance and business, and I knew that going into it, I would be able to learn a lot more about what it would be like going to college for business and all the different paths that I could go down. And I totally found that through the field trip and classroom time and meeting these women, they, a lot of times, didn't go to school for exactly what they ended up working on at Fidelity, and it kind of showed me all the different paths that I could take in that field, which is super beneficial to me.
Excellent. Andy?
So, first of all, I want to, Mike, I have a question, but the comment I want to make is I'm sitting here amongst a lot of women, there's a lot of women out there. I'm married probably to the most independent woman I know, who's been in high-tech and now in teaching. And moving this forward to get involved, the whole idea of STEM and stuff, I certainly understand it, I get it. I love exactly what's going on here. But the question I have is, what you've described is what the program offers would seem to have value to Fidelity as well as to the general public if males were also exposed to these concepts. Is there anything that, in Merrimack High School or within Fidelity, that broadens the scope to just not be focused on women?
I can start. I can start. We do. So, Rock the Street is geared, and that's their mission, is women volunteers, women students. We are also doing programs, partnering on programs like that, Emerging Leaders Program, which is open to men, women, girls, boys, you know, all students. And we're also looking at, and this is probably light-breaking, we're also looking at additional programming in the fall, hopefully, with other financial literacy programs, that we can, we can still do Rock the Street, but we can broaden the audience. So, more to come on that. We want to try this, get the partnership going, and then expand from there. Yep.
And I have a question on the mentorships. I know that 15 of the girls are still doing one-to-one mentorships. What areas of finance are they being exposed to with these, based on the people that they're being mentored by?
The, so the one-on-one mentoring that's going on right now, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's geared more towards career mentoring right now. The fall is when it was more finance geared. And Rock the Street has a strict curriculum that we follow. You may have heard in the video, it's more investing, rather than balancing the checkbook, which is obviously very important to know your personal financing, but we also want to expose them to investment and saving for the future. The one-on-one is, again, career, so figuring out, understanding that not every girl's going to go into finance, but how do you take that and adapt it to your future, and figuring out what do you want to do in college and then beyond? So, it's more career-based.
Excellent. And just as a clarifier, I believe that Merrimack is the only school in the state that was selected for this program.
Correct. We've, Fidelity's only done this twice, once in Texas and then here in Merrimack.
Wow. So, thank you very much for the honor.
Absolutely.
We do appreciate that. So, are there any other questions from the gallery? Either side, we're good. Thank you very much for the presentation for the program, and we look forward to hearing more about the mentorship and where it goes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give them a moment to lock down the laptops, and we would have dropped it off to you in the morning, Linda, don't worry. Thank you so much. So, we will move on to item number five, which is the Board's response to the Budget Committee's revised operating budget on the 2019 warrant. And so, the presenters are our school board liaison to the Budget Committee, Naomi and myself. So, what we, what left us is different than what came back. And Naomi, I don't know if you wanted to kind of recap the Budget Committee process and how this came to be, and from there, we can deliberate. Thank you.
So, the Budget Committee is a body that takes the budget as it was put forward by the school board, looks at it, spends some time breaking into groups, meeting with different officials within the district, going line by line, and then coming back with their own perspectives to independently supplement our own as far as the expenditures and the way that the budget has been built. In this particular year, they had one item that they felt differently about or strongly about, and chose to add $200,000 to the budget as it was brought to them, under the idea that it might be used to kickstart, so to speak, the building project that might or might not occur where the red building is at the moment. So, the idea is that that might cover teardown for that building as an interim step moving forward.
Okay. And to that end, I think, the one thing I think we want to acknowledge is the specific area they're talking about is raising the building, leveling it, and filling in wherever holes may be on the lot, so having a clean lot. The concern I have with the way this came about was, we have been talking about our budget since the summer, when we started bringing our department heads forward for large-ticket items, you know, the initiatives that they were looking to undertake, manage, and oversee in the upcoming budget year. We spent many, many nights going over the numbers, getting to a number that we could felt comfortable putting forward to the voters, and at no time in this process was there ever a consideration by any of those members to communicate any concern to us that this is not being addressed in our budget process. You know, the one thing we've been very good about is being transparent, proactive, overly communicating the initiative, so that's been something that, I mean, this was blindsiding, is that this never came up in the budget deliberations that we had to budget for this. But we do have on our capital improvement plan, an SAU sped office plan, which, of course, this site would have considerable bearing on, a very strong consideration for usage. So, with that, you know, we do have a plan to do something, but it's not this year. So, to take one step when we don't even have our planning and building committee report back yet seems premature, and I know that, you know, they're specifically getting into an area where we didn't discuss it, and I'm a little concerned that it's going to be almost a tax with a statement attached to it that doesn't have the vetting and the planning that we would look to have as we do during our budget process. So, that's, that's what I see this difference is personally, based on, you know, just based on the time we spent on this budget. And I kind of opened up to you to gather your thoughts, because we are going to have to tonight take another vote, because this is not the budget we voted on. So, Andy, I see your hand going up. Cindy, I see yours. So, Andy, you go first. You're first.
The microphone might be a little hot by the time I get done, so just give me a warning on this. First of all, I want to say that because, I'm going to stop that, I'm not going to draw my conclusion first. I sat through watching the Budget Committee meeting where the proposal was made, and then I in-person sat and listened to the continued discussion that was there. The thing that was most striking to me is during the first discussion, where it was discussed about adding the $200,000 to do the raising, I believe Naomi brought up the concept that we've talked about, another way to go about raising the building is to include it in the overall project for the SAU sped when that warrant comes up, and taking the teardown costs, perhaps getting it more attractively cost, but rolling it into the bond. And that, as an option, is sort of, I think, where this board, along with the planning and building, was sort of heading as part of our planning. And then there was a lot of discussion by the chair and the vice chair about, about how, oh, no, we've got to get rid of this ISO, it's the albatross around the district's neck, so we've got to spend this money to be able to tear it down right away. Later in the discussion, which we're going to talk about in a minute, we talk about warrant articles, there was a discussion about the turf field, where they were complaining that we chose not, or the petition warrant article does not talk about bonding. So, in two different areas where there's significant costs, there was very conflicting viewpoints of the Budget Committee about bonding, which I found confusing and a little frustrating, because we, as a board, try to look at what makes sense in terms of the overall project costs, the ramifications. I'm a liaison to the Planning and Building Committee, and Shannon, you mentioned planning and building was a part of this. We've given them a charge to come up with evaluating several different options for this SAU sped building, come up with their recommendation, but ultimately, the decision lies with this board as to what approach to take. One of the options that's on the table is to utilize part of that building. Will it be the choice that we take? No. But I think us choosing as a board to raise a building before we know what the plan is, whether part of it might be used, is not prudent to the taxpayers of this town. So, I'm, I'm not for spending the money. If we come up with a decision during next year, and the money's in the budget, maybe we'll use it. I don't know. I mean, we haven't really laid that out yet. It's an option that could be in front of us, but I just think that making the comments that we must tear this ISO down with $200,000, when we could use the $200,000 to put some of the education things back in that we took out from the original budget, is frustrating to me as a board member, because, as you said, we put a lot of time and effort into this. And I think that the will of a few of the people talking about getting rid of a building based on their viewpoint and driving a bigger process was frustrating to me as a board member. So, I just wanted to share my comments, because I was very good. I didn't say, state anything during the meeting, so.
Thank you, Andy. Cindy?
Well, Andy covered pretty much exactly the points that I wanted to make, which were the fact that it could be bonded in a bigger project down the road, and the fact that it's premature. We have a planning and building committee that is discussing this, and we have, we have a process that we go through, and we are not through that process. So, I am not supportive of that, that I'm not supportive of the increase. I don't think it's prudent to the taxpayers, and I'm not supportive of an increased budget, because I do think it's premature at this time.
Thank you.
There are two parts to my thoughts on this one. The first one is that I think that the Budget Committee is, was, and is acting out of the absolute best interests as they see them for the district, and have strong opinions on it. And I think it's worth recognizing that those opinions led to this particular suggestion, and it's worth having that information from them. It's valuable. That said, one of the things about this year's budget is we asked for financial prudence going into this, and went both on the board side and administrations and all the individuals on the district who worked on this budget, worked with that in mind, and came in with a budget significantly lower than we might have done, were not one of our goals. We put off a roofing project, for example. If the idea had been to match or exceed default, we might have left the roofing project in. And so, it feels to me that what essentially happened is the vacuum that we created on purpose, in order to be fiscally responsible, was then used for a purpose other than something the district might have used it for had we not brought it down in the first place. And that's the bit that concerns me most.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this, this budget? Andy?
So, the question in front of us now becomes, do we support a budget that has increased above the default, or do we not support a budget that we crafted but was added to to create above default, such that default becomes the default recommendation of the board? To me, that's the hard part, because we put so much effort into it, into the creating of the budget, and it created, and it's left us with something that I don't think any of us like what we see. So, if we'd say no to the overall budget, it means that we just want to take the default, which is more than what we asked for. And that's the irony of this, is that we're going to recommend, by, if we, as a board, choose to not support the operating budget, it means we're essentially, in either case, asking for more money or supporting more money than we originally asked for. So, for me, that's, to me, it's a lose-lose as far as what we do, because I think the taxpayers are going to pay more money than what we had proposed initially, which is frustrating to me, so.
Thank you, Andy. Cindy?
My question is this, so, if, let's just do a scenario here, that the default budget is what is approved by the taxpayers in April, hypothetical.
Okay.
Are there any consequences to the current budget we've put forward? So, would there be things in our budget we wouldn't be able to move forward with, because we wouldn't have to spend up to that default? Nothing would obligate us to spend the money that's approved, although it would affect the tax rate for one year, whatever that delta is. But are there any initiatives that we have in our budget that, based on RSA's, the law, that we wouldn't be able to do?
I'm going to put it to the left side of the table.
I was going to say, I would just go back to the original cut list that we had before you, and that's where we would go. But as far as anything within the operating budget itself, I would not see us going there. I think we would, we'd go back to the original list that we created.
But, Marge, if our operating budget at default, $67,000 higher than what we put forward, all those things in the cut list are in that, that we restored?
So, I'm saying I would go back to those, and those would be what we would look at for taking out, because that's how we had it in the first place. We had them on the cut list, you brought them back, we would just go back and take out $67,000. But we would not go back into the budget itself, unless I'm misunderstanding.
I think, my understanding is, we wouldn't need to cut anything, because we're already $67,000 over what we presented.
If I could just pipe in.
Please do.
The budget that the board presented to the Budget Committee was $133,000 less than the default budget. Okay? So, then the Budget Committee put $200,000 back in. And so, you know, your net is like 67, you'd have $67,000 more than what you presented to the Budget Committee. So, your decision would be, if the budget failed, do you want to spend that $67,000? Or do you not want to spend that $67,000? I want to, I want to correct you. If, that's only if the default, if the proposed, if the proposed, if it fails and the default is, we actually get $200,000 more if the operating budget passes. We get $133,000 more. Absolutely. If it's there. So, we, if we chose not to do anything, we would take that $133,000 on a failure of the operating budget and return it back to taxpayers, if that was the case. That would be your option, yes. Right. So, I mean, that's, that's the real bottom line, is, we, the board in place, after the budget has passed, will have a decision to make with this money.
Do we want to spend the $67,000?
Unless something, if the luller session changes that amount.
Right.
That's what it is, so.
So, my assumption is correct, in the sense that, what I wanted to make sure is that there isn't some kind of RSA that said, you know, based on how it's calculated, that would, that would prevent some flexibility with some of the items.
In other words, is there something we couldn't spend it on, that maybe we were planning?
Correct. That's what I, that's what I wanted.
So, the budget we presented to the Budget Committee before they actually had their hearings would be kept whole? Correct?
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. So, with that, we're going to have to re-vote on this article. So, I will entertain a motion to, I guess, accept Article VII. Andy?
I think the motion needs to be whether we want to recommend it or not.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we take a vote on whether we want to recommend
Okay.
the budget as presented by the Budget Committee for the new amount, which is $200,000 higher than our original proposed operating budget.
Right. Which is $77,854,036. So, your motion is to not recommend or to recommend?
I want, I want to take a vote to recommend, and we'll see what the vote is, and that will end up, you can take it either way you want.
Either way.
So, it's going to be a vote to recommend the budget as presented from the Budget Committee.
Okay. So, vote recommend made by Andy, seconded by Cindy. Anyone want to speak to the motion, because this is an unprecedented thing for us to have to deal with, for the most part? Naomi?
My intention is to vote in favor of it, predominantly because the budget is a lot larger than this one particular article, and I'm concerned about essentially putting aside the work of 70-plus million dollars' worth of budget because of this one particular piece, but my reservations about it as a whole, I have already voiced.
Andy?
And just one more comment. This is the problem, is that, do we vote to recommend an article, something that we crafted? I mean, the problem is, is that, and here's where I'm having my, I don't even know the way I'm going to vote, even sitting right this second, right? Because the default budget, even though it gives us more than enough money than what we needed, it's based off of default calculations. It's not calculated based on specific needs. If we vote to recommend the budget, it means that you take everything that we did, but it comes with a number higher than what I think we need to. So, in the back of my mind, I'm saying, I want to show our belief in proposing and recommending the budget that has the least effect on the taxpayers. Obviously, a $77 million budget is not least impact, but if I can save $67,000, I'm tempted to do it. Bottom line.
Cindy?
I mean, I would say I'm a, I'm a very strong supporter of the Budget Committee as a whole. I mean, as you all know.
Former chair.
Yeah. I'm a former chair of the Budget Committee, and I think there is a strong purpose of the Budget Committee. It puts a lot of extra eyes on the budget, all of which even, you know, at this point in time, being on the school board, I welcome, because there's always different perspectives that come from different people, and you've got citizens volunteering their time, which I very much appreciate, you know, looking for prudency for the taxpayers. In, however, I'm not supportive of increasing the budget for this amount, because I know that I'm not in favor of spending it. So, to approve it for me, I would feel disingenuous approving something that I know that I won't support spending. So, because of that, that's my rationale, that I will be voting against it.
Of course, Andy.
Just a really quick comment. So, I as well certainly applaud the, what the Budget Committee went through, because if you looked at the deliberations beyond that, that sort of in-game thing, they went through and they did what they needed to do. I mean, I'm, I was the, when the motion was, when the petition warrant article existed several years ago to disband the Budget Committee, I was one of the leading people against it, because I felt the Budget Committee had a place, having been chair, or on it for five years, chair for three. I certainly see the value there. Again, encourage Budget Committee members to come to our budget discussions here, to get the context, to share through public comment. I mean, frankly, to be honest, the second public comment at our meetings was designed around the Budget Committee discussions that I pushed to have, because it allows Budget Committee members to ask questions at the end of a meeting, based on what we discussed at the table as a school board. Use it. Use it. Ask the questions. Find out. Don't wait until the last minute to do this. So, for me, supporting the Budget Committee, but frustrated at this very in-game sort of action that was done, so.
For me, I felt that that $200,000 was governance, and that's really what we're hired to do. It's not, you know, when you're talking about an initiative that was not even vetted, other than a one-off comment, could $200,000 do the job? To me, that's governance, and that's what we're hired to do, and that's why the board meets year-round to do that work. We are the governing body, and the decisions to operate the district need to come through us. And, and so, I wholeheartedly agree with Cindy's spirit of why she does not want to support this budget, because we're basically, it's disingenuous to vote for money that we don't want to spend. And given the option, I, you know, I would not be spending it either. The one thing that I think was not discussed, and maybe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Naomi, was when we look at our operating budgets, we don't just look at the operating budget. When we look at the capital improvement project, we don't just look at the capital improvements, we look at bonded debt. And that was truly a driving decision on how we moved our projects and how we managed our projects, and why the SAU sped building is where it is, because we're going to retire debt before we acquire debt, because we want to be financially responsible, and that's the way to be financially responsible, not to add another layer to the onion when we're trying to peel the layers back. And we are in a good place to do that. So, I do not want to create a spike in the tax rate, in the dip in the tax rate, and $200,000 to And two hundred thousand dollars, to me, because of it having an, a very specific initiative that was not vetted, to me, that's a political statement, and I don't want our taxpayers to pay a fee for a political statement. And to me, that's what two hundred thousand dollars is. So I'm definitely voting against it for those reasons. So with that, are there any other questions or comments to the budget? Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending an operating budget of seventy-seven million, eight-hundred fifty-four thousand, thirty-six dollars signify by saying aye. Aye. Naomi votes in favor. Opposed? The motion fails one, four, zero. So it will be on our warrant as not recommended by the school board by a vote of four, one, zero. So thank you for that. Again, we are on to item number six, which is the board's response to two petition warrant articles. And for that, we have the two articles that were alluded to earlier this evening, and the first being the turf field petition. And by petition, shall the district raise and appropriate the sum of one million, two-hundred thousand dollars for the design, construction, purchase, installation, and original equipping of a new artificial turf field for Merrimack High School? And furthermore, to authorize the school board and school community support groups to apply for and obtain any donations, gifts, devices, bequests, grants, et cetera, which may be available for said project, and expend any such donations, gifts, devices, bequests, grants, et cetera, for the purpose of designing, constructing, purchasing, installing, and equipping the new artificial turf field. So it was a mouthful, but it was, it was thorough. So, so with that, I know we have had a very public process of, yep, and of our parents coming to us, talking about their intention to not only get the petition warrant article, which is here and has been verified by the school district clerk, with a minimum of twenty-five signatures from Merrimack registered voters. But obviously, with this, there's the expectation, and I know that's come forward, that there will be fundraising efforts to offset the cost of that 1.2 million. And with that, you know, consistency, they are here tonight, again, consistency, I'm, I'm encouraged in, in support of the effort. Because of the schedule of the Budget Committee, they've already voted on this. We do have to vote on this, because it is something that will cause a financial impact. And I think it's a good thing if we do, anyway. So it has not been recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of six, two, and one. And now it is our turn to vote. So with that, are there any questions or comments to the turf field petition? Brandy? I shouldn't be wearing my glasses, I'm trying to read you guys, sorry. You're, you're all fuzzy.
As you know, I have been in contact with the parent groups that are leading this effort, and we sort of teamed up to really strive to work diligently towards those fundraising efforts. And while I realize that the timing of this is not really in favor of, of us relative to the Budget Committee and their timing, I can say that we are actively seeking fundraising, sponsorship especially, and we've made some significant progress towards acquiring some of those funds from various sponsors. Do we have any money in hand? No, we do not.
We asked you not to, so that's good.
Yeah. Are we, do we have a, a plan? Absolutely. And are we making significant strides in that direction? For sure. I would ask that we, my favor is that we, or my, my vote is that we vote in favor of this, specifically because of the benefits to our school district, to the safety of our children that are participating in these sports. I think it is something that will benefit the entire community that, that participates at Merrimack High, and even outside of Merrimack High, relative to other options such as looking at the MYA, as well as potentially renting out our fields. You know, I, it's, for me personally, an effort that I truly hope does pass, so we can move forward with this initiative.
Thank you. Cindy? And, oh, I'm sorry. Chris? I'll let you go first.
Just one question, where are we planning on placing the turf field? Like, how close to the school are we thinking?
On top of the grass.
Okay, so right over where the current field is?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Just wondering.
Oh, thanks. Cindy? On the roof next to the pool, right? Well, we'll keep the freshmen looking for them until they're juniors. Cindy?
Yeah, this is an initiative that I'll be supporting as well, for a variety of reasons. I think we saw, I mean, I know we saw a lot of parental support throughout the fall consistently at a number of our meetings. We've talked about the safety of our students, just the transportation headaches that we're currently faced with, not only just from the ability to get transportation due to the bus workers, or the bus driver shortages and such, but it's also a huge disruption. It also prevents students from rallying their teams, and, you know, it inhibits some of the team spirit that might be there otherwise. Not that we're, I mean, completely lacking team spirit now, but I think it allows more to participate, it allows more usage of that field, including, that would extend, I believe, to the band, as well as a variety of other sports. And the truth of the matter is, is that we are locked in. We are in the center of town, our high school, and there's no land for other fields, and there is a field shortage in our town. So although it is a price to pay, I feel that it is a value to the community. It will allow us to further use that limited amount of space that we have, and provide a safer situation for our students.
Okay. Andy?
So it was interesting to listen to the Budget Committee deliberate about this, because in the discussion, there were some valid statements that they made. And in particular, I think it, one of the ones that was important is the fact that how tight the timeline was as we created this whole process. Because normally, if we're going to vet something this big, you start talking about it in like September, or the summer, and you work your way through and things. And I know this came fairly late into the process. It was late presented to us, and the petition warrant article was late coming out, so the timing was short. So to the layman, and to the facts that were available in front of the Budget Committee last week, there were a lot of things that weren't necessarily done yet. Like, you know, you talked about some of the preliminary fundraising you'd been thinking, looking at, some of the ideas. We know that the plan for what the field's going to be like, and the, and the engineering reports, and, and all the details about the field, won't be there for another couple of weeks, because of what we, because remember, we as a, as a table, as the board, directed the, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, is that what he is?
Yeah.
Business, to go and get, and do the, do the, the plan, so we have it in, in front of us. So the timing is much more jumbled than we're there usually for. So for that, I can't disagree with the Budget Committee. But, and, and as a result, I think many people on that board took their vote based on what was in front of them today. I mean, I, I would contend potentially that if you had asked them to take a vote after the plan existed, after you had a little more details on the way you're going to do funding and fundraising, the vote might not have been the way it is. But there was very strong belief by the leadership of the Budget Committee in a certain direction, and I think many people followed in that way. So I think that one of the challenges as, as the, as the, the groups go forward, and you, Brandy, being sort of the liaison into that group, is be very much a proponent of the information when you get it. So when the plan is available, promote it. Find a website, find a Facebook page, promote it, get it out there, so people see what the plan is, what it's going to be like. Talk about all the different usages, how it can be used. I mean, one of the things that didn't come out in the discussion of the Budget Committee was the fact that you can't use a football field at all until like June, when we're there for graduation, and then they can practice on it later. You can use it in the fall, but then you've got to let it sit and heal all spring. You have a turf field, you can use it all year round, all day, from, from dusk till dawn, well, maybe not that long.
Dawn till dusk.
Dawn till dusk, and even beyond that, because you've got the lights, right? But then it's closed, you know, after those other stuffs. But the bottom line is, the usage is there. You talk about the transportation, the safety issues, we've talked about that at the table as well. So I think that promotion of all those things, making awareness for the voters, I'll use the phrase, winning the hearts and minds, that's really the challenge that's in front, if we want to make that happen this year. I mean, the fact that Chris didn't know where the field was going to be, to me, is like, I mean, I thought everybody knew, you're just going to replace the field inside the track. Well, there's a challenge right there, right? To make, well, not for you, but for the, the effort, to make it out there, you know, show pictures, show what it's going to be like, things like that. The final comment is, is that the big pushback that the planning, the Budget Committee gave was, they want to see it bonded. They don't want to see it, they don't want to see it done in one swell suit, they want to see it bonded. We had that discussion, both at the Budget Committee, I mean, not Budget Committee, the Planning and Building Committee as well as here, that when you have something that has a lifetime of twelve to fifteen years, before you have to redo it, doing a ten-year bond on something that lasts a little over ten years is maybe not the most prudent way to go. I mean, it does level the cost, but it essentially means you're going to pay annually for that cost of the field forever.
Like always having a car payment.
You're always, like leasing your car continuously. So there's pros and cons to doing that, you know, and the other thing is the figure that was floated in front of them, like, I know that Naomi corrected it, but to, after the twelve to fifteen years, it's about five hundred thousand dollars to redo the track, or do, do the turf field, based on what we're seeing at Bedford and other schools. That's the figure that they're planning for. So I think there's a lot of information that's out there. As we mentioned, we originally didn't have this in this year's capital improvement plan, but if the voters, the parents, the people that want to use the field, believe it needs to be happened, I can't not support it. I have to support this warrant article as an effort of the voters to try to make it happen. This isn't us saying we wanted to put it there. This is the parents, the voters, saying they wanted to put it there. We, I think we, because we believe it's good for the district, need to support this and say, yes, we support it, and then let the voters decide through the promotions and other things like that, so. That's where my head's at on this. Sorry. I'm burning out the mic today.
You are, actually. So I'm going to go with Naomi than Brandy.
So this is my night to be contrarian, Andy, I'm taking on the role. Yeah. I think that this is something that needs to happen at some point, and the sooner the better. I have absolutely no problem with that. The thing is, there are so many different avenues to accomplish it. The biggest question that I have about this, and, and my mind's far from made up, is there's this half-piece here, there's the fundraising part, and then there's the cost, but the full cost is what's on the petition, which it has to be, because the fundraising hasn't happened yet. And that means that the full cost will be billed, will be part of taxes, and will be gathered. The fundraising isn't part of this, yet. It might happen, it might not. Even if not a single dollar was raised, this money will have been appropriated. The idea is that we'll return some of it. But fundraising in order to be allowed to return money is a very different situation than fundraising in order to pay for the field in the first place. It's a very different endeavor, and I'm not really sure how all that fits together. Yeah, I mean, the field will happen even if nobody donates a dime, if this passes.
But, can we?
Please.
Well, go back and forth, go ahead. I'll let you.
I'm just, want to make sure first.
No, you're fine.
So you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, this is asking for the 1.2 million to be done, or whatever the actual cost, not to exceed that amount, right? And then, any fundraising that's done, will then be, we will then, as a board, be able to take that back in. Once the, once it's been approved at the ballot, if it's, if it's approved, we could set up a fund to receive the, a, something to receive those funds specifically for this But it doesn't need to stop this year. I mean, we know that if we vote to, as the town votes to expend it, and donations and sponsorships are, it doesn't have to be done in a month, or two months, or three months. As we go through this process, we can continue to get this, and then, as a board, we have the ability to, you know, if it's over five thousand dollars, we have a public hearing where we take the vote in to be able to, to offset the cost. So it's an unknown. You're absolutely right. It's an unknown to know how many donations you'll get. I believe the parents group has been targeting, they've used the number five hundred thousand as a target they'd like to achieve, which would be nearly half the amount, which I think is really healthy, right? I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to see that level of, of community involvement to try to make this happen. So for me, the timing is, we can't, there's no guarantee of it, but, you know, this, this is an effort being brought by a concerned group that want to make it happen, that's incented to try to get this.
Of course. It's the back and forth thing.
So it's not fundraising in order to try to make it happen, it's fundraising to reimburse part of what will have been raised in order to make it happen, which, which is quite different. And I'm not saying I disagree with doing that, but I think that we need to consider this as its own expense, without hedging bets with money that hasn't been collected, and may or may not be collected. I think that we need to consider it as a board, as the sum as it stands, and vote as we are comfortable with that sum, even if no money were to be raised in the future.
I exactly know what you're saying on that. So, you know, really, that's, that's what I would call worst-case scenario, and we budget a lot for worst-case scenario. We do, we do some of our most responsible budgeting with worst-case scenario, which we will do. You know, but in the same token, I think, we have, you know, a board member who's supporting this effort through, you know, her role on Parks and Rec, which is definitely plugged into the right section of the community. We have parents who have made commitments to us, and early and often, and this is not the first time I've seen you all, and I think it might not be the last, and I think that's wonderful. I, I welcome you every, each and every time, with open arms. Honestly, that's, that's been our best success in this community. When you think about kindergarten, kindergarten, although, you know, came with no guarantee of what the Keno amount would be, that, you know, we knew what the minimum would be, but, you know, we were hoping for more than we got, but the grassroots effort of the community rallied the effort. You know, I'm definitely counting on you to do your best job to get us, you know, the best opportunity for us to offset the tax rate. You know, I know that you're taking a very concerted and conscious and responsible effort in doing so. I think you have a good ground group of people, and I think there are more that can be rallied, and I think there are more that are going to rally when they know that this is a, a reality. The one thing it's not is on the ballot, so it's not real yet. And I think that once it gets real, things, things will get real. I truly, you know, but without the commitment of, of something on the warrant, it was, it was hard to actually say, what am I, you know, am I doing a pipe dream, or am I doing something that really has a plan? And I know that we've done some engineering as well, so we've hired for that, to make sure that, you know, we're planning for the, for the right project, with the right, you know, situation. So I'm feeling pretty good about this. I know that it's, it's the story about this is only going to get louder from tonight on, so I feel very confident with that. So Brandy, I think your hand was up, next.
We heard Carrie mention tonight that this initial, this whole project started with a few parents that were concerned relative to soccer and transportation to a Bedford turf field. Once that concern was raised, it snowballed into multiple conversations that wound up taking place even outside of the soccer arena. I happen to be a soccer mom, and so I'm well-versed on the soccer side of some of our challenges. But one thing that came up in discussions was even from our Merrimack High School football coach, who mentioned that our last game, our field was tragic in nature, it was a disaster zone.
Chris was happy to walk off with two shoes from the halftime show.
I had, I had all my shoes in the halftime show.
Not all of them did.
Not, not everyone, no.
So it, it was a true safety issue. At that time, we also had some college scouts that happened to be there and see our field in its place of, of disaster at that time, and it was mentioned by those colleges that you guys might want to think about doing something. So I think when it comes to, yes, we started with a few parents saying, you know, hey, I've got a safety concern here, and it's a legitimate safety concern, one that I share, although my student, my kids are not at the high school level yet, they will be. And when I'm at that point, I, I would love to be able to have the kids go to a turf field, and I would love to have the community feel that the football teams can experience while they have home games. I would love to see other sports utilize that field without safety concerns or concerns of ruining the field. Aside from that, I think Merrimack, we take pride in our facilities, and we do a lot to ensure not only the safety of our students, but that the, the buildings and the facilities and the grounds of the campus are maintained to a certain level of, of integrity, and, and we want to encourage our community and surrounding towns when we compete with them, you know, to see our facilities in, in good shape, not certainly a, a field that's falling apart and, and is a safety hazard for our football team. So I guess from a, what started off as a safety concern has now really broadened into much more, and I think while it is at the much more, and I think while it is at the point where we're looking for sponsorship and we're looking for funding, even at the 1.2, I think I'm in a strong position for favoring this because I think that it's something that our town needs. I think our students deserve it. I think when we have college scouts come, that's important to put our best foot forward. So.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the turf field petition? Seeing none, all those, we did take, we have to take a motion, a second first, so, Cindy.
So I'd like to make a motion that we, it would be what, support?
Recommend?
Recommend, thank you, that was the word. Recommend the turf field warrant, petition warrant article that's been presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brandy. Any questions or comments to the motion? Wasn't surprised there wasn't. All those in favor? Oh, wait, you're thinking about, I'm not going to cut you off. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries 500. Thank you.
May I just ask?
Yes, absolutely.
Number eight?
Okay, I was going to number after.
Thank you.
Okay. The second petition warrant article is a homework petition we heard about from Mr. Bevel earlier this evening. We actually, because there is no financial impact, we do not have to take a petition, but we are also, we have a right to take a petition. So I'd like to understand the will of the board on that. The one thing that Mr. Bevel said was if you, you don't, you know, if you don't agree with me, I prefer you don't take a petition, and I, I am concerned, those words actually gave me a response in my mind that if we did have a, a position and we didn't share it, well, that's kind of what we're here to do. So that actually made me want to do a, a vote on this, and that's my personal opinion. Cindy.
Whether we do or we don't, I'm fine either way with what the board, the, the rest of the board members feel. It's certainly within the right to put forth a petition warrant article.
Of course.
As part of the process. What I do have a question on, though, is what that means, and I just want to confirm that my understanding is correct, which is if, let's say it again, another hypothetical situation, it passes, is, does it come through as an advisory? I mean, is there any action that the board is required to make if it is approved by the public? I'd like some input on that, please.
It's advisory only, and you, that's your will, what you do with it.
So, so as such, maybe I'm changing my mind. I would prefer to grant Mr. Bevel his wish, that we do not recommend, that we, we don't take a vote and not recommend. I would rather just let it.
Let it breathe, and?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else have, I feel Andy's three quarters of the way up. Is he waiting for someone else?
Are we just talking about whether we're going to take a position?
We, we have a choice to take a position or not. So this does not have a financial impact to the ballot, so, to the budget, so therefore we do not have to. If we do, it's for our, only for communication purposes only, and not for...
So it's...
To endorse or to not endorse.
So is this the opportunity to state opinions on this warrant article, or is it only take a position? I want to understand the protocol, or well, sort of the process that we're talking about.
Sure. Well, right now, we just, I want to vet publicly, openly, I want the will of the board to be understood, you know, on, on this, this warrant article. So we don't have to, if we take a vote, it goes on the ballot. If we want to vet this warrant article here, we have every right to do that, it's, it's on our agenda. So, so now, everyone's hands are going up, okay, so, Andy, you had the mic, so you, you still have it technically.
I'm going to wait.
Okay, so I will go Naomi then Brandy.
I think we should take a position. I both appreciate and respect the idea that the petition be allowed to run its course as part of process. However, to some extent, the public relies on us to have a perspective, and I think we have taken a perspective on this protocol repeatedly and publicly, and should continue to do so at every opportunity.
Thank you, Naomi. Brandy.
I would agree, and I also feel that there is some misunderstanding of the homework protocol, and that there needs to be a way to clearly communicate. This petition and, and what I heard Mr. Bevel say is not in line with the homework protocol itself. So it's really frustrating for me to have a petition when it's not in line with what the homework protocol truly is. So from that standpoint, I too would agree that we need to take a stand or make a statement by taking a vote on this, because I think the public needs to understand that if the homework protocol was what he was saying it was, that would be, you know, a different item. But based on what the homework protocol is, I feel that we, as a board, need to communicate our opinion about that and stand by what the homework protocol truly is.
Thank you, Brandy. Andy?
So I, I completely agree. I think some of the statements that were made around us, the board not taking a vote, that's correct, we did not take a vote, but we also were, were within our rights if we had concerns about it right up front, and we didn't. We wanted to get some data. I think there were, there were two surveys that were done, one for teachers, one for parents, but it was done within, within only, within only a few months of when the protocol was implemented. We have not taken a survey, to the best of my knowledge, since then. There was a lot of misunderstanding from staff and parents about what this all meant. So there was obviously communication opportunities that we didn't make, and I think a year ago in the, in the spring, or was it in the fall, I can't recall, but we, we did, we had a debrief from the, from Mark about the protocol, and I, for one, had some very serious questions and concerns and some challenges to administration to get clarity that I wanted to talk about this spring, when we had some more mileage under the, the protocol and things like that. The concern that I have is I believe that the way that this, this petition warrant article is written to modify or extend essentially the, the policy will have unintended consequences. One of the reasons that the protocol was even discussed was the fact there was a lack of consistency across schools, across teachers, within departments, as to what it meant to assign homework, to turn homework back, to grade homework, and to count it towards what was done. There's a belief that if it wasn't broke, don't fix it. That's essentially what this is saying. I've been a parent. I've had kids that were honor kids, that ate homework, chewed it out, got 100% every single time. The way it was graded back then, it, it helped them. But I highly disagree with the statement that says it helps all kids even at the lower end, because there are more than that number of kids who struggle with homework that have their grade reduced because of homework. Either it's not, either it's graded incorrectly, the student wasn't able to do it for various reasons. Kids are all over the map when it comes to this, and I think one of the intents of the protocol initially was to try to come up with a way to level it out and to make it beneficial for kids all across it. Now, one could argue that some kids that wanted extra points for homework aren't getting it, but I can tell you for every one call I get about that, I get two calls saying, my student is now able to focus on the more, the more open grading in a year through exams and other things like that, and they actually do better. So I think to, to, to say that this is benefiting the district as a whole is not accurate. I also think, and this is the unintended consequence, this actually reduces the flexibility that a parent has, because it puts all of the ownership at the discretion of the individual teacher. It says that they will decide how homeworks are collected, reviewed, and graded, and that they will take the cumulative average of the semester's homework counted towards the student cumulative grade. It is so prescriptive as to what happens with that homework, that it allows a teacher to choose how they grade it. Do they grade that it was turned in? Do they grade that the student tried everything, or do they grade it that, whether it was correct or not? I mean, somebody could do all the homework, and then the old model could, could get 100 on the homework, but if they got them all wrong, they could get a zero. There's no, there's no guidelines when it comes to the way that this policy is written. So for that fact, I mean, do I think that we need to look at this and evolve it over time the way the protocol is? I think it's highly likely. I mean, we, we had discussions, we need to see the results. I think the board has to have the flexibility to work openly with administration, transparently with parents, to do this. I think by having a policy in place that formally restricts in this way here is not the right approach, for all the reasons I've said, so.
Okay. And honestly, I'm with the majority that feels that we should take a position on it, and first and foremost, I think I've said it before and I'll say it again, just because we accept testimony doesn't mean by not responding to it that we, we validate the accuracy of it. Most of what is in here is not accurate, is not how we do things, it is not how things were done. When I look at the homework protocol, and since I see your hand, I'll get that next, when I look at the homework protocol, if there's any question to its validity and our, what the board's steps have been taken, they have been validated by the Department of Education and revalidated by a lack of action at this New Hampshire State Supreme Court. We've been validated at the highest levels of government in this state, that we did not fail at our job at this board, and that what we're doing, which obviously is in here, that we did not do our job, and it's been validated three times over that we did, four times over that we did. So with that, I think when Mark McLaughlin says to me, we're going to keep doing it this way because that's the way we've always done it, I'll know Mark has an evil twin, because Mark is always about refining and improving everything year after year to say, what can we do to do things better? Is this working the way we want it to work? I expect refinement from him every single year in every single area that he can see where we can measure improvement in student outputs. Homework, the way it was presented to us as a board, was specifically designed to help for intervention and extension. What does a student not know? What does a student know? And by doing homework and being able to measure what the student understood when doing homework, was not meant to be a penalty or an endorsement to their GPA, but what does this child need so that they maximize their education in Merrimack? Because I know that by having perfect scores every time, that they need to be enhanced with, with content, and if they struggle, it means I need to redirect and go back and reinforce. And without that data point, how do we do individualized instruction to maximize student output? That's what, that's what I got out of every presentation we've gotten. And I think there will be refinement, there's always refinement, there will always be refinement until Mark's evil twin shows up, because I've never met him, the one that's complacent, because I've never met that guy. So with that, I think that we are in a good place. I think this is, this petition warrant article is, is based on inaccuracies, and I think we, as a board, are doing everything to empower our administration to maximize student outputs. They wouldn't, our district will not put a child in harm's way by doing a grading system to put them at a disadvantage. They want them to not only thrive, but they want them, when they get to that next level of their life, whether it be a job, or whether it be a university setting, to be able to thrive independently once they leave our halls. And I think all of the things that the district does, homework protocol from the first day to the last day, and everything you do within and outside of the classroom is to do that. So this flies in the face of that, as far as I'm concerned. Let our administration do their job, let us help support the administration doing their job to the best of their abilities, and empower them and give them the tools to do so. So this does not do that. So I am in favor of, of having a vote. So I think we, when it comes to something this important, that it went to, it was petitioned to the New Hampshire Supreme Court, and we prevailed at that level, I think we should have a formal position on it. So I'm, I'm very open to doing that. So Cindy's hand was up, and I believe Andy, you're next.
So I'm fine with the vote. I told you I was kind of on the fence, but that's totally fine for me, and I totally think your points are very valid collectively as to why we should, so I will say that. One request I do have, because I think this is a little bit in uncharted territory, from what I've seen in the years I've been in this town, this type of a petition warrant article, particularly as it relates to a protocol, and not even a, a board policy, I'm, I'm struggling with that, and really trying to understand that. But what I would recommend, because I think it's going to cause a lot of confusion for taxpayers, and we've talked about using some of the social media that we have, really with a statement of facts. You know, what exactly is this protocol? Why was it instituted? So I did listen before I came here. Mr. Bevel was on an AM show, I believe it was today, with Karen Testerman, and I did listen to a good part of it, not the entire thing, I think it was an hour interview. And there were a number of inaccuracies that I heard in that as well, to your point. And I think that as those statements are going out into the public and being publicly shared, I think the school district really needs to state the facts about what is the protocol. I mean, this does not mean that kids aren't doing homework at all, it means it's not counting towards their grade. One of the statements that was made was that they felt that Assistant Superintendent McLaughlin had, original goals of the program was to keep a few missing homework grades from bringing down a kid's GPA, for example, and I know for sure that was not part of the intent. So I would say, the other thing that I've heard is that the board did not vote on it or doesn't support it, and I, I want to be crystal clear that I have supported our Assistant Superintendent in this protocol. I will continue to until we have enough data to make a different decision. So I, Assistant Superintendent McLaughlin is someone I admire and respect. We hire our administration to put forth these protocols, and as a board, I don't think we need to micromanage every protocol in the school. I also did not get a lot of correspondence from parents. There were just a couple early on, back two years ago, where I heard a lot of, where I heard not a lot, just a couple of concerns for it, but when we had the board open, I recall a majority of the parents that came supported it. That's my recollection. So as it relates to this, I think, like I said, there's a lot of history that we have at this table collectively, that the public that will be voting on this does not have. So again, I would request that we put something out there, whether it's a question and answer about it, or what the facts are, that we can share with social media to help educate the taxpayers and the community regarding the protocol, and, and, and any appropriate facts that we have that would, that we could make available for our taxpayers.
Okay. Andy then Brandy.
Yeah, I agree with Cindy. I think that for many reasons over the past year, we've remained relatively silent as a board with some of the, with our ability to respond to some of the information that's been out there, which I think is, is not, not accurate, it's a little bit misleading. I think that trying to figure out a way to communicate some of the specifics around the protocol, what we've done, what the process is, I think is very important to do. And the other thing I'd like to do is, I'd just like to reiterate something I said a couple of minutes ago, is that just because if, if we take a vote not in support of this petition warrant article, that doesn't mean we're sitting here just saying, oh, it's great the way it is, and then move on, because I think we, as a board, continue to look at implementations of things such as this. We challenge administration to ask the questions. Again, there are outstanding questions that we have for the administration around the implementation that I've hoped to be discussing in the spring after we get more of the data, and we will continue to do so. Not only this, but everything else that, that comes across. So I know I, as a board member, you know, being here for the next couple of years anyway, will continue to, to work with administration to make sure the right thing is done, to look at the data, to make sure it's clear.
Cindy?
In one more point, I think, to what we can share with the community, we do have, I recall Dr. Schoenfeld had provided some resources that we were able, some research that we were able to read and made that available for the public. Now is a good time to also share that, the research in support of the type of protocol that was implemented in Merrimack.
Absolutely. So we can reframe it, repost it with, you know, in light of the petition warrant article, here's the supporting data to show why the school board's position was not in favor of this petition warrant article, to basically resurface it, make it re-relevant in our webpage and on our social media.
That would be great.
Makes, makes total sense. Thank you very much. And Brandy?
I completely agree with everything Cindy just said, and I would also, on the fact sheet, that at some point we can... And I would also, on the fact sheet that at some point we can post, if we could also please include the Supreme Court information, as well as a reminder of the best ways for parents to contact, the appropriate methods for parents to reach out to administration. Relative to this, should they have any questions, comments, or concerns? So that way, they can appropriately get their concerns answered, as my fear would be that once we do some sort of fact sheet or post it on our website, that the firestorm might start of comments, which I personally welcome reading them. However, they cannot be responded to in an appropriate administrative fashion. So I feel that it would be a great reminder to include, you know, an option for them to either reach out to their teacher, or who in administration is the appropriate person, point of contact.
Thank you. Naomi?
While we're going through the laundry list. One other thing that has occurred to me repeatedly when I've read this particular petition is that even were one to feel that the protocol should be rolled back at some point in time, which I do not think I agree, Cindy, with everything you said on that one. Creating a policy that puts something fully at the discretion of the individual teacher is an interesting way of handling it. For transparency slash clarity, I am an educator with classroom experience of my own. I have made my fair share of mistakes in the classroom. And to create a policy that would have prohibited my principal from explaining to me why I should do it differently and better, would have been problematic for me and my growth as an educator. And so it's interesting in the ways that this essentially would lock the school and district out of any real way of mentoring teachers who might or might not be handling homework in a useful way, would be problematic to me.
And that's why you're the ringer. So none of us have ever spent a day in the classroom, but we do appreciate that perspective. So thank you. With all that said, we'd like to, I would entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend the petition warrant article. I'll make it. I will, I move to not recommend the petition warrant article regarding the homework protocol. Is there a second? Seconded by everybody, but we'll go with Naomi because she's the ringer. So are there any questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of not recommending the homework protocol petition warrant article, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. And before we move on, we have to look at the ballot. So we need to frame it just a little bit. We have always historically, and this is our ballot, so we've historically put the last article as the budget. So if you indulge me, Article 6 is the pavement and drainage article, which we've already voted on. Currently, Article 7 is the budget. So I would like to move the turf field petition to Article 7, the homework petition to Article 8, and the budget to Article 9, so it ends the ballot as it always does. Are there any concerns to that? Seeing none, I think we can do that by consensus, so we will make that the enumeration of our articles. In, at your place settings tonight, we have what I call suggested assignments for the warrants. So Article 1, of course, is the election of officers. Article 2 is acceptance of gifts and property. And so I was going to assign that to Brandy, and seconded by Naomi. Does that work for everyone? Excellent. The MTA contract, since Andy and I negotiated it, I will take the MTA contract. Andy, will you second? And then for the trailer, Andy, will you put that forward? And I will second. For number 5, a capital reserve fund for school district repairs, that's the one with the 10%. Cindy, would you please put that forward? And Brandy, will you second? And then for the parking lot reconstruction at Mastercola, Naomi, will you put that forward, please? And then Cindy, will you second? I think everyone gets to. The operating budget is done by the budget committee. And with all this said, as long as everyone is good with that, it sounds by consensus that we are, we will share this with our moderator, Lynn Christensen, so that she knows how the evening will progress. Okay, we are on to the housekeeping portion, almost housekeeping. So we are on to item number 8, which is proposed school calendar for 2019, 2020 with March.
Thank you. So included in your packet, you have a proposed calendar for 2019, 2020. And I want you to know some of the materials that I used to put this together. I always go back to past school calendars, because those are good guideposts. Also, you saw in your packet recommendations from the Merrimack Educational Support Staff. Both associations have the ability to make a recommendation. The only group that did this time was MESA. And then I always get a calendar from Newton, Massachusetts, to ensure that at least two of the vacations are not parallel with Massachusetts vacations. So just for the public to go through what is proposed, you will see that the August Academy has been proposed for August 26th to the 30th. That's where we train our educators, and where they also are able to be in their classrooms, doing classroom setup. Labor Day this year comes on Monday, September 2nd, so that day would be off, and the first day of school would be September 3rd. We have found out through asking our parents what they think, that Columbus Day is an important day for many families. And so you'll see that that's being recommended Monday, October 14th. There are two dates that must be taken by New Hampshire state law, and one of them is Veterans Day. Notice that November 11th occurs on a Monday in the year 2019, so that would be off. We have found out by assessing, again, our staff, that really a three-day Thanksgiving holiday is terribly important. When any survey is done, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is always raised up. If that were to be taken, it would be November 27th, 28th, and 29th. The December recess would occur approximately a week and a half. It would go from December 23rd up to and including New Year's Day, January 1st. We have also learned over time that taking Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day off is important to our public. If we took that, that would be Monday, January 20th. The February break would occur the fourth week of February, which again is opposite to Massachusetts. So that would be February 24th to the 28th. Spring recess would likewise occur the fourth week of April, which would be April 27th to May 1st. The second date, holiday that must be taken, is Memorial Day. That occurs on May 25th. And if we had no inclement weather whatsoever, the last day of June would be Monday, June 15th. So I know that this board has been very good about asking its public, its parents, what is thought of the calendar, made the assumption that you'd be doing that again. So my hope would be that if a survey were rendered, by the time you process that, we would be able to come up with a final calendar on March 18th. You've got a date in between. March 4th is your next board meeting. I think it would still be underway. So March 18th, I would hope, and that would keep you just about where we've been in past years. So any questions about what's been proposed?
Brandy?
So this is my first round of calendar. But one thing that I saw, excuse me, was relative to the December break. And I realized that we're going to send out a survey, and I was wondering if there was a chance that we could add if Thursday, the 2nd, and Friday, the 3rd were an option to not have school, simply because it's a Thursday and Friday right after break. So I don't know how much learning will be done on two days right after a vacation, right before a weekend.
So what we found, and again, who knows what this survey will yield, but when you take those two days, then what that does is pushes further out in June to the 16th and 17th. So what we've found over time, and again, who knows what this group will say, is they want their children to be out as early in June as possible. So it's, you're playing kind of this balance game, and so on. And so that's literally what I did. I duplicated what we've done in the past based on prior knowledge, but that doesn't mean that this group wouldn't think differently.
Right. And we could frame it saying that that would move the last day of school, you know, with not considering makeup days, to June 17th. So knowing, you know, action consequence. So if that makes sense to you. The one thing, just as a knee-jerk, and I'm just being knee-jerk on this, is we all get our time off the first day of the year, and so it starts accumulating then, so they might not want to take it off the first day they could take it. And some employers may not be able to offer that. So just a thought, but you know, absolutely, we can ask that. And on the flip side, my knee-jerk on this was the 23rd. We normally do the 24th and 25th off, but the 23rd is a Monday. So on the flip side, would we offer the 23rd off of December, when we normally don't offer the 23rd off, knowing it's a Monday, there might be lower attendance, knowing that the last day of school could be less makeup days. And so far, we're doing great this year, knock on wood, would be June 12th, if school were held. So we can add that in as well. So I'll take last year's, kind of frame it out, add those two, bring it to next board meeting, and that gives us probably, we can have to...
The only problem is your next board meeting is March 4th, and you're up against vacation.
And vacation, yes.
So I just think probably you need to do the survey the week of the 4th of March, because I think persons, although they go right to it, I mean, we had over 1,000 responses.
We did. So if you're okay with that, well, we'll frame it out. We'll take the feedback that you gave tonight. Anything that became irrelevant from last year's survey will drop. If you don't mind me taking the task and going with it with administration, I will be glad to do that. Okay. Andy?
You say like you don't know what I'm going to ask.
I always know, I don't necessarily.
You don't know. One piece of data that was helpful last year is to have the superintendent poll some of the other districts and see if they're still working on a 180-day calendar versus hourly. And I know everybody started crafting, but if you could possibly go to some of the neighboring districts and see if they're still sticking with days or hours or whether, and mostly what I'm looking for is districts that are moving from one to another. And I'm always curious as to the reason why. Because I know some went to hours and moved back to days, you know, and I'm always curious why that is, because we get a lot of pressure when you start getting a lot of snow days to go hours.
Do you want specific ones, you know, do you want to specify specific ones?
I don't know any right now. If I think of one, I'll send you an email. But in general, just surrounding districts, I know Amherst does hours, for example. I know Manchester, I think, is it solely hours that Manchester does? I don't remember.
I think they've included some days within their calendar. I'm not sure where they are, but I'll check it.
But it'd be good to know. I mean, just, they may not know for this year, but they have a good idea for what the direction might be. Thanks.
And we'll have three years of data, because we'll be going into a new contract year, so that we could compile. So for that, for data collection purposes, we'll definitely make sure that we preface that. So now we are on to housekeeping, as I promised. So we're on to item number 9, which is the approval of February 4th, 2019 minutes. Cindy makes the motion, seconded, seconded by Andy. Andy edits to the minutes. Cindy?
I think there was just one piece, I didn't see it spelled out. I went through it rather quickly, but it was the part where administration agreed to, or we authorized administration to spend money for the requirements of the turf field. And I think it was like $78,000. I think that was in this meeting, but I could be wrong. So I would just ask that we verify that, that that was the meeting where we made that authorization, and if so, to include it in the meeting notes.
Okay. Are there any other edits to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. We are on to item number 10, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000 with Matt.
Thank you very much. The first gift we have is to James Mastercola Elementary School. It's from Claire Graham, to support families having difficulty with lunch accounts, in the amount of $50. We thank Ms. Graham very much for that donation. Very noble gesture of hers. Another noble gesture is to Merrimack High School, the first team, from the Fidelity Charitable Foundation, and Jerry and Tracy Bull, in the amount of $1,000, to support, as I said, the Merrimack High School First Robotics Team. We thank them also.
Thank you. Cindy?
I move that we accept the gifts, a special thank you. And I'd just like to note that the Bull family's been very supportive, as well as Fidelity, of the First Robotics Program for many, many years. So again, I'd like to move that we accept with our extreme gratitude.
Is there a second? Seconded by Andy, and Brandy also seems to be very for it. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. On to item number 11, consent. I'm going to take consent tonight. We have one administrative resignation and retirement, and administrative nomination. So on consent tonight, we have the following administrative resignation slash retirement. Marjorie Chaffery, Superintendent, and the following nomination, Dr. Mark McLaughlin, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, made by Andy, seconded, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. The motion carries 5-0-0. Onto item number 12, other correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none? Any comments? Comments from the board? Andy?
Scratching.
Is that me?
No. I think it was...
That was my hair or something.
It sounded like paper moving. Yeah, it was. I found myself, the end of this budget season, and as we get to the warrant, finding some very emotional decisions that the board has need to make. And three of them we've tackled tonight. We've tackled what the budget committee did to add money to the bottom line of our operating budget. We've had a turf field warrant article by parents, and we've had a homework petition policy change warrant article by another parent brought in. We've taken positions on each one of those, but I'm hoping that the public sees how hard this is to do this job at this table. I've been doing this, what, seven years now on the school board? And this was by far the hardest year, because there are people with very sincere beliefs on particular items or whatever, that come to us for a recommendation, and it's hard to take a stand. It's very easy for many of these to say, "I abstain." You know, let the people decide. But we are at this table asked to take a position in their heart. And I don't want to say that because we took a position against a particular item or policy or whatever, that it means we want to discourage this sort of input, because we don't. We want the conversations to happen. We want the discussions to occur. As we said with the homework, we're going to talk about it, even though we as a board don't think the policy makes sense, the way it's written. So I just wanted to just go on record that, for me personally, I mean, I don't know if others feel this way, but it's been very strenuous and strainful, straining this time to make some of these decisions, and it's been hard. So thanks.
Thank you. Andy, any other comments from the board? I see none. We'll close comments. Onto item number 13, new businesses. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none? 14, committee reports. Committee reports from the board, Naomi and Andy.
This is a noncommittee report. I would have reported on the budget committee, but I think we have covered it amply.
Yeah, we did.
But it is a committee, and we've reported on it through our discussion.
Which we did.
So you can't call it a noncommittee report. Just clarify.
Outside of the agenda.
Whatever. Fair enough. I have two. First of all, the item that's actually not a committee, but actually I'm part of the board, this is Suresk. We had our monthly meeting with the Suresk Board of Directors. Most of the time was spent on two areas. One, looking at the financial status or state of Suresk. And remember that Suresk is coming off of a changing year. The good news is Suresk remains strong. It looks viable for, for not only continuing programs, but also looking at extending programs over time. So that's, it's very good, because it means that Suresk is back to their roots again, doing what they were good at. And I'm feeling very good about that part. Means that all the districts in the state are going to benefit from the services that are available to them. The other thing that was discussed is sort of the evolution of the executive leadership of Suresk, where we, there needs to be this more longer-term planning around the programs that are developed by Suresk, the leadership of those sort of programs, working with the districts to... of programs, working with the districts to, to make them known and available, but also get the input from the districts on what Suresk can do. Because you know, Suresk does special education and other sorts of programs that the districts can take advantage of, as well as staff, sorts of things that can occur. So a lot of good thinking, getting back, again, back to the roots, try to have, try to have good, strong leadership for Suresk, and that discussion went on and, and made good progress. The other is today, we had the school, the District Wellness Committee met. They meet about four times a year. Today, they discussed across all the different schools, the varying wellness activities that go on for both students as well as, as, as staff, and suffice it to say, every school has a lot of activity for both students and, and staff, ranging from, you know, physical things, you know, that are outside movement, as well as just activity, things like that. One of the schools had a cribbage league, which I thought was interesting, which is certainly a really good way for a lot of kids to do things that are not necessarily physical this time of year. There was also an update on the nutrition. Dave Zicki gave an update on the general nutrition requirements, based on what they were hearing from the federal guidelines, where before the guidelines were leaning almost towards all fat-free milk, whole grain foods, what was the other category? I can't remember. Very strenuous. They backed off a bit, which part of it is, one could say it's not as healthy, but it also creates more options, especially in the grain area for some of the things that students like, some of the things that weren't able to be created with, with whole, whole grains under the previous constraints. So there's a lot of activity there, and, and there's some reporting that's going to be happening over the coming months on planning and, and so where we fit.
I think it was fresh fruits and vegetables was the other area.
It was, but that part didn't change. But there was another, I'm remembering, there was one other thing that changed that I just can't, it was sodium they were talking about. That's, that's what it was. So, so that was discussed as well. And then, and then also, there was also health cost containment committee funds of $3,000 that were sort of provided to the wellness committee to decide how they wanted to spend it across the district. So they're having some ongoing discussions of ideas on how they want to do that. And then also, they give an update, there was the wellness fair that occurred where they had. So we talk about benefits here, and one of the things that occurs, they have a wellness fair for all the, the staff. They had over 210 the fair, which is a really good positive. There were 20 vendors that were there presenting information. There was a lot of information about programs and, and ways to save costs that ultimately helped keep not only employees' costs down, but also district costs. So we look at that guaranteed maximum rate, the health care increase, the more that the employees take, take part of this, it does help a portion of that increase every year. So there was a lot of emphasis there. So, and that's it.
And thank you, because I did not make healthcare cost containment, because I had a work commitment I could not get out of, and that would have been my subcommittee report had I been able to attend. So, and the wellness fair is definitely something, you know, when I talk about healthcare cost containment, we really are working on keeping premiums down. We talked about it a few weeks ago about the risk pool, and, and how we, the size of our staff comprises a large part of that. So whatever can be done to contain costs on that, whether it be shopping procedures, you know, an X-rays, an X-ray, you know, get for a cheaper cost, the benefits they have in the programs to do that, and then health scans and, and biometric screenings, and those are all things that happen throughout the year. So again, the district takes a very proactive, long time, long-term, very proactive stance in trying to stabilize that cost through individual efforts. So thank you for that. So the other thing I did when I, after healthcare cost containment didn't work, because I was at a work meeting, but I did go to Concord that night, and Commissioner Edelblue held an audience of board members regarding his Learn Everywhere Initiative. And I know that there are some questions and concerns that districts have regarding how do we grant credit? How do we, when you talk about student safety, and we're so big on that, about where the liabilities when a student is going off campus in a Learn Everywhere environment and getting credits from their home school, being us? So those are things that haven't been vetted, but they're definitely moving down the train, you know, moving down the track with this process. So it's something we need to keep an eye on as a district, and as we're getting testimony on that, there may be something that if we feel we need to speak up, we should do that sooner than later. So that is my committee report, so I'm going to see Commissioner Edelblue. So are there, are there no other committee reports? Seeing none, we will take item number 15, public comments on agenda items. So if anyone would like to speak about what we spoke about tonight, please do so. State your name and address for the record.
All right. Richard Foot, 129 Indian Rock Road. Instead of just asking general questions about the meeting, could you go to the website and, and the board's website, and read up on these topics and stuff?
There's a couple of things. Yes, so we do have a lot of our budgets, our warrant will be on the, the website.
The homework one, what I'm curious about, that I really don't know much about, it's hard for me to ask a question without wasting your time, because I have no clue what the is going on about it.
There are resources that we put on our website, a number of, actually probably over a year ago when it first came out, probably a year and a half ago, research on the value of homework. I know Dr. McLaughlin presented to us about the homework protocol. I believe the PowerPoint is still available on our website. So we absolutely, and if you find that you're not getting a resource, you can always call the district. That's something, you can always call the district and speak either with our administrators or if, asking if there's materials who may be able to guide you in the right place, even on our website.
Cool. I'll do that then. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Foot.
It's a lot easier just asking you questions about it.
Anytime. We will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Signified, made by Andy, seconded, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. To an empty room, and good night.